Six thirty-ish, we'll start the meeting. I guess before we get into the meeting, just want to acknowledge the unfortunate passing of our previous town manager, Dave Atherton, so thoughts go out to his wife and children. It's terrible. All right, we do already have a personnel issue, or I'm sorry, a personnel executive we need to add, a second to include Sean Hendy. Is there any other need to amend the agenda?
Nope.
No, can I have a motion?
That's all moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything on the minutes of September 4th? We had select board minutes, liquor board minutes, and water and sewer commission minutes.
I had nothing.
I saw nothing.
I saw nothing.
All right, interim town managers report.
I did follow up with Nancy Godro about the Rutland County Solid Waste Board and happenings. I sent you guys an email, and I also printed out the article that was in the Rutland Herald on Friday, September 12th. She said that was an accurate summary of their meeting.
She said it was, or it wasn't?
It was. She has not, they were supposed to have another meeting, but I have not heard back from her again.
Okay.
I do know that they were working on some executive sessions and waiting for some results of some investigations. Brookside Services, who runs our transfer station, has let me know that mattresses and box springs are now going to be fifty dollars, fifty-five dollars each at the transfer station. That's the new cost to take them to the Rutland County Solid Waste Transfer Station.
That's the reason there are about thirty over on Syndicate Road.
I know, I just drove it the other day and I saw all of those.
They're going to be all over the place.
Tons of them.
Yeah, unfortunately.
So that's, where's that, sorry to interrupt, but where's like, who's, whose fault is that? I know it's not our, it's not...
It goes back to the Rutland County Solid Waste District. I don't know who's there, so that's the rate.
Is that statewide thing though? Is that state mandated, do you know, Butch?
No.
I don't know.
That's just, I mean, that is...
That's a huge...
That's hu, that's...
I think probably finds this a matter of disposal fees when they take them to the larger places that they dispose of them.
Yeah, it's just, it is, it's unfortunate. We're going to see, we already see too much dumping, and we're just going to see more.
Yep. A huge thank you to Josie Cohn for taking care of the welcome sign, as well as our highway department that got her mulched the same day that I asked for assistance. The pictures look great, I got pictures sent to me.
Cool. It looks nice out here too, it looks like she weeded out here.
They did. Pretty much the same day I texted, they were at both locations. Sean has been in contact with Amia recently, as they've had need to draw the substantial amounts of water. Our source still has capacity, we're monitoring it closely, and if the drought does continue, we need to start conservation efforts for those on Plains Road. You are noticing some water pressure differences, it's when the pumps are kicking on, and people can feel free to call Sean if they have questions. I can answer them a little bit, Sean can answer them a lot.
Yeah, so you and me.
Maybe we get a lot of calls about it?
Yeah, I've got four, I think Tom's got three. Sean, I think, go ahead.
I've got none.
None. Well, that's interesting.
Just to go on that, after talking to both Ann and Tom today, realizing there was some issue up here, I did change the set points on our well pump, so I'm not letting the reservoir drop as low before they kick on. That should help, but I won't really know.
I will let you know when I wash my hands again. Our highway department has been working on finishing up grants and AIDS projects, so we can get the reimbursement forms submitted before September 30th. Soccer season has started for the rec department, there's going to be a senior wellness fair at the rec area tomorrow at noon in conjunction with a monthly senior luncheon. And Bone Builders is starting back up on September 22nd at the Pittsburgh Congregational Church, and registrations are also out for the October 25th Disc Golf Tournament and the Holiday Craft Fair, which benefits Pittsburgh Christmas for Kids projects. We have those registration forms here, and I think they might be online as well. Still meeting with department heads for the budgeting, and am on target to have a rough draft of the budget ready for the October 1st meeting. Cory and I have pulled together and submitted everything for the preliminary audit for RHR. They're looking to be here the first week of October, and I have a follow-up Zoom conference with them tomorrow to finalize dates and answer some questions they have pre-audit in-house. I did talk to Rutland Town Administrator about the abandoned RV on Route 7, and about their approach so far to get it removed due to the number of complaints coming in about it. They, their police chief is on it.
Checking for those Epstein files that are in?
He's been talking to V-Trans on a daily basis. They have put in several complaints, they did get a price, because they thought about just getting it towed, and the price is astronomical to get it towed, so...
My suggestion, they get a couple dumpsters, big cloth thing, and you just scorch it up and put it in the dumpster, because no one's going to accept that thing.
Really?
That's what they should do with it. Oh my god, it's terrible. The state should do it, it's in their frigging pull-off.
It's classified as an abandoned vehicle, it has to go to a yard that takes those, and they have to store them for X...
Amount of time, yeah.
Before they can destroy them.
Why?
Huh?
Why, in case someone claims it?
Yeah, that's the law.
I don't think anybody will claim that one.
There's too much junk in that to claim.
Uh, no.
There is a, there is a process to go through to do that.
Maybe the state ought to go ahead and try that process, and do all that parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, I think we did send a letter, did you guys sign it?
Yeah, we all signed it.
Dave was the only one that didn't sign it, because I got it out the same day.
Okay.
He was, he was at school, I did take it with me when I delivered his packet, but he wasn't home yet. He was still at school. I attended the New England State's Government Finance Officers Association Annual Fall Conference, and I was able to find out how other Vermont towns are accepting credit cards online for online payments.
Cool.
And what NEMRIC is capable of as far as different options too, that's already built into our system that I wasn't even aware of, so I had those...
So we have the capability already?
To do ACHs, yes.
Cool.
Apparently.
Okay.
I have to get ahold of CHIP and get some more information on it, but I did talk to several Vermont towns about different options, and one of them is sending me their draft of their RFP that they sent out three years ago for online bill pay options.
Okay.
And who they ended up selecting and why. I also took a session on how outdoor recreation companies, or how outdoor recreation is helping drive community economic development in a lot of smaller towns, especially up in the northeast, and it was northeastern Vermont, Maine, New Hampshire, and New York.
Like bike trails and things like that?
Bike trails, things like that. One of the women that was one of the panelists also works with Ohio and a couple of other states. She works nationwide, but she mentioned a couple of different things in Ohio that they've done to really help rebuild their economies in those smaller towns.
Nice.
Using rec, which was kind of really cool. And then GASB was there to give us the new regulatory requirements we're going to be mandated to do.
What's GASB?
Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Oh. Okay.
So...
Should've known.
So I know what we have to do going forward to stay in compliance. The good thing is that we're a smaller town and don't have as many enterprise funds as a lot of the larger towns, so it's easier for us to be in compliance.
That's good.
And that's it.
Well, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Ann? Anyone? Any public comments?
Any select board comments?
Oh, yes, sorry, I skipped select board. Any select board comments?
Don't do it.
It was a good thing to skip that.
Okay, any public comment? I have a public comment. So, the governor did just sign an executive order today promoting housing construction rehabilitation. I don't know if anybody listened to his, his conference this afternoon, but yeah, so, and I can't, I know it had to do with like some flexibility with energy codes, because some of the energy codes were so stringent, it was adding twelve thousand plus to the cost of every home. Expedited permitting and review process, wetlands review streamlining, Marco loved that, where is he? State land utilization, interagency coordination, brownfields and contaminated sites, and yeah, monitoring accountability. If you could get all the details on the state's website, but that's actually really good news, I thought. Anything that makes it easier to build is great. Easier and cheaper. So, and that's, I believe, did you list, I think it's in effect until end of 2026?
Yeah.
With 181, is it in conjunction?
Till the legislature gets their hands on it.
Okay. So, yeah, that's my news. All right, no other public comment? Okay. All right, old business, this is our second Enhanced Energy Plan hearing. And no one has come.
Almost Butch is here for it.
Oh, could be.
Is that what you're here for?
I'm here to...
Sometimes I can't tell when there's people online, but there's no one.
I'm sure I'm here to say that I plead that you're moving forward with the Enhanced Energy piece of the town plan.
Oh, yeah.
It's an important piece.
It is, it is.
It actually is helping, hindering one town from stopping a massive sewer development that wants to come in. We were talking about Regional Planning Commission last night, that there's a massive one that wants to come into Fairhaven, and they don't have their Enhanced Energy Plan yet, apparently.
I believe it's also, is it Tinmyth or Ira? They want to put up that big, that big radio tower, and they're using their town plan as a way to keep it out also.
Yes.
So that's why it's important that we have this in our, in our town plan. Is part of the hearing, do we have to go over publicly what is in there? I guess I prob, you know, I feel kind of...
It was available for public...
Well, that's what, yeah, I know, I just didn't know if that was like part of the process, was having to kind of go over it.
Go through it?
Okay. I just want to make sure we're on the up and up with that, so...
No, and I'll just let the planning commission know next week when they meet how it went.
And so we're not voting on it until next meeting when we have a full board?
Right.
So if anybody does want to look at it, it's on our website.
Yep, it's on our website, I have printed out copies here, one's on the bulletin board as people are walking in, and I believe I might have one still outside my office door. If not, people can come ask me for a copy, and I'll very happily make them one.
All right, awesome. All right, does anybody have anything on that before we move on? Okay.
I have your times, that you open and close.
We open.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, I forget to kind of have separate that out. All right, the updated personnel policy with revisions.
It was just, I did all the revisions that you asked for.
Okay.
You just had to approve it and sign it, I believe.
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Social media policy, same thing, we already...
No.
No?
No. This is...
We went over this a few times, and what we changed, stuff last meeting.
Well, we had, we had it in the packet, no, the social media policy, we had it in the packet the first time as just the generics.
The generic...
The generic one.
Oh, the VLCT one, that's right.
This last time we talked about it, to see if we wanted it. I changed it to the town of Pittsburgh. As I was doing it, really right now, the only one this applies to, because you and I don't really have access to the town Facebook, is our rector for the Pittsburgh rec page.
Oh.
That's the only one that this social media policy really applies to right now as you read it.
Okay.
I did make it so that if we were to open it up and do Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, et cetera, I mean, we do have a YouTube channel that we're just dumping our videos to, but that's it. We could use this in the future. I don't know if we're really there yet, but I did do as asked and changed it to town of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
I don't think there's any harm in having it.
No, there's no harm in having it, I just wanted you guys aware, and that's why further down, you say, "I have a personal use of social media policy," to, if people are using their personal social media to, for town stuff, is what that one covers. Because this is using town, like Pittsburgh rec, or town of Pittsburgh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Social media. So I wanted to make the clear delineation between the two.
Yeah, okay.
So you can yea or nay, or whatever you would like with this one.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I mean...
All right, any further questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tapco, updated quote.
So, you had approved eight thousand six hundred eighty-seven twenty-seven, I went to order it, and it's eight thousand seven hundred forty-nine ninety-seven for a difference of sixty-two dollars and seventy cents.
Okay.
Which is not significant, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because it was voted on at a specific dollar.
Yeah, 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 okay. So I guess we have to...
Make a motion to add the seventy to it, I mean...
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Because that's been what, that was months ago that we started that, right?
That's why, this was...
In the past, they did like...
Right, not...
The next one hundred and fifty or two hundred.
Well, we'd done not to be less than eighty, a hundred dollars.
Right, yeah.
Right. We just lose the last.
Yep.
No, I don't, we learned that a lot.
I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what I was doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
The personal use of social media policy is this one thing. What I did was I took the social media policy out of the handbook as asked, put it on here, and basically this says that when posting content or commenting on town business in their personal capacity, employees must use a disclaimer which establishes that their posted content or comments represent their own opinions and do not represent those of the town.
Yeah, okay.
And that, if personal use of social media that adversely or negatively affects or impacts the workplace is prohibited, the following is non-exhaustive list of examples: name-calling and personal attacks of, or other such demeaning behavior, friendships, dating, or romance between coworkers, cyberbullying, stalking, or harassment, release of private or confidential data, unlawful activities, misuse of town social media, et cetera, et cetera.
And this, so this, the way it reads, it's, these, the bullet points of unacceptable beha, it's still unacceptable even if they say, "These are my own opinions and not those of the town." Or am I not reading that right? Is that, if they go on and say, "These are my own opinions, not those of my employer..."
No, because it says, "The following is a non-exhaustive list of example situations or activity when personal use of social media may adversely or negatively affect an employee's duties or the workplace."
Okay.
So, and if you don't want this, this is fine too, I just took it out.
I'm just thinking of some, a lot of the stuff that's been happening lately, where people are posting, you know?
Yeah.
Things on their own private pages, and regardless of them saying that, "This is my own opinion, not those of my employer," it's...
So, will you, oh, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it wasn't too long ago, town of Pittsburgh had an employee that was terminated as a result of postings that were made on Facebook that were inappropriate on this person's personal page, and that person was terminated.
Okay.
So, I think, I think you may want to think deeper than just a surface of peace here, because we all, even I'm still a public official, all these guys are public officials, and anytime we speak, we speak as representatives of the town of Pittsburgh. So it doesn't matter if it's on my own page, or your own page, all the way through.
Yep.
You know, and I was the town manager, no matter what.
Right.
And on your own page, somebody else's page. I'm wondering if the board might want to take a little deeper thought on this before you move forward.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
In light of, as the chair says, in light of some of the comments that have been made this past week on social media, and I bringing up Rutland High School.
Yep.
Had an employee post it on his own page, but they have, they have a policy that does not allow that, and he is now on some sort of leave, I guess.
Right.
And those things, those things happen, and I guess it's up to you folks to kind of figure out, how far can you go? But you do have history on that.
Okay.
You know, maybe four or five years ago...
It was a little longer than that.
Yeah.
It was a little bit...
I think it was before I got on the board.
Yeah, before you was.
But it wasn't long, I know what you're talking about, it wasn't long before.
Right.
And they even been a little before you, and it was, it was over some issues there.
I'm not sure if I know what the...
Right, you may want to talk about that at a later time.
At least wait till Mark and Dan...
I know, so I think let's, let's continue this on to the next meeting, and yeah, I think it is, we'll look deeper and make...
I was going to suggest that anyways, so, thank you for that.
Yep, thank you. Oh, voting delegate for the VLCT passive for annual meeting, which is coming up next month, and we should vote, and Ann will be going, so we should vote her in as the delegate, voting delegate.
Motion to make Ann the voting delegate for the, second letter suit.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, clerk's, clerk's drop box location, not to be confused with the...
Not, to be confused with the drop.
Not the book box.
The book box is that.
Book box is done. Done with that.
After the Board of Abatement's last hearings, it was brought to me that we might want to look at moving the clerk's drop box location, so that people have to get out of their cars to put a payment in the box. So, it has been suggested to move it up towards, like, the entrance coming in, put it up towards that way, even maybe in front of like the handicap parking spots or something like that.
Well, or... The entry, there's a door right there, and one of those pillars, put it right there.
Well, yeah, can it be, can it be, and I'd have to go look, but is there a place in the entryway, so that way if somebody drops something?
It's right there.
It's right there, where somebody can pick it up and it doesn't get wet or whatever?
We could take off that mounted case that we don't use outside.
Yes.
And we could stick it right there in that corner, so if it blows, it's going to blow into that corner more than likely.
Yes.
Because that's where we...
That would be my suggestion.
I agree.
That way, people have got to get out of their vehicle, if they drop it on the ground, it's, you know, should still be there, that way, because that was the issue, was people claimed they put stuff in, and it wasn't in there, so we don't know what was happening. But I can see, you know, you pull up with a car, and you've got to reach out, open the thing and put it in, and, you know, somebody could miss the slot.
Could've gotten it in, no it.
Then the wind blow it away, or somebody pick it up, who knows? So this way, they've got to, you know, walk up there and do it.
Yeah. So... Thank you. So, I'm here for the BCA, and Ann said it very well, and I've done some research with some towns around us about where their drop boxes are and what they use them for. Brandon, as an example, is, you have to park in a parking spot, and walk quite a ways to the box that's in front of the town office, and their drop box is for ballots only. They have a separate drop box for money, and it's...
That goes inside, right?
No, no, their drop box is on the other side, on the curb side of the sidewalk, of all places, but they have a drop box on the curb side. Proctor just has a drop box for, they don't have a ballot box, they have a regular drop box, that you have to pull up and get out of your car, have to get out of your car in Brandon, and we bring this to you, as Ann said, is because the last, since we've taken over the water and sewer abatements, three, maybe four years ago now, we've had several instances of people saying that they put their, their payment...
Insects.
Into the drop box, and the, and I'm not dissing anybody, but then the clerk testifies, "We didn't get it." So there's a, there's a disconnect between the clerk and the person, and so far, the Board has sided with the town every time, the town's argument every time. So we'd like, we'd like to have a little, the Board is really concerned about making it more difficult, not more difficult, but more, be more sure that your stuff goes into the box and not dropped on the ground, or dog in your homework, or whatever that, those things say. We think, the Board thought, after discussion, and Ann had it right, that if we, if we asked people to get out of their car, place whatever they're going to place in the drop box, and they would see that if it did or didn't go in. The other advantage is you could put a camera, if you put a camera with a continuous loop, and I think you might have spoken to that a little bit, on that area of the drop box, then we could, then we could glean some evidence of what we're up against. But it's getting frankly quite embarrassing, that we're having this same problem, time after time after time. And I'd like to say the Board, the law says the Board has to, that you guys are right, the town is right, whether it's a property assessment, or bill paying, or whatever. So, so that's that on that, and I'm sure that even if you put it, I looked the other day, even at the end of the sidewalk, and poured a little six-inch concrete pad that you could bolt it down to at the end of the sidewalk, not blocking the sidewalk, but where you'd have to get up and get out and walk in, and it'd be out of the way.
But, well, if we got a box on the wall that we're not using...
Right.
It should mount right in the same spot.
There you go.
And you don't have to pour any cement, you don't have to do anything. And I think the camera, I think if this happens again, we'll probably have to do the camera, but I would think we would put it here, see if the issue goes away, and if it does, then we don't have to worry about the camera.
I'd be happy to have it go away.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, no.
And while, while we're at, at it, and I have a fore for just a second, I want the public to know that previously, the Water and Sewer Commission allowed one-day grace periods, when you paid your bills. The Board of Civil Authority, that's, that's not our policy. Our policy is that they're due on the day they're due, let the close their office.
Yeah.
And we, so, people that are expecting that one day, or have had that one day in the past, the BCA goes by, the policy is, they're due, and they're due, and they're due, close the business on the day they're due.
Yep.
So, yeah, just want to make that really clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did we change that on the last board for last meeting?
I thought we...
We changed it, yeah, we got it.
And I'm changing all of the wording on all of the billing.
So we did that last, last meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, and bill consequences.
No more...
Yeah.
No more grace period?
No.
Okay. Do we have to have a motion for moving the drop box, or is that...
No.
Okay.
You're not spending any money?
No, all right. And then just, I think that already kind of touched in with your report, is that, I think simultaneously with, with moving the drop box, so that people, yeah, so it makes, makes it more concrete when people are putting it in there, but also making it easier for people to pay, and it'd be great if we could pay online, because then it'd be easier for a lot of people. Because we don't want it to be hard for people to...
Working towards it, it might be a while now, you know, but hopefully, our next fiscal year, we will have a plan in place, hopefully by then.
Okay.
I'll be probably bringing an RFP to you guys in the next month or so, to put out.
All right, great. All right, Goshen grater discussion.
Goshen reached out to me last week, two weeks ago, about their selling their grater.
Okay.
They hired Brandon to do their roads, and so they don't need theirs anymore. It's a 1986 Dresser, which, not a huge upgrade from ours, but considering the way ours has ran this year.
We have problems with ours, but we just got it fixed.
Yeah, but one part was fixed. It's scheduled for repairs Monday, the 22nd. It's up in, at CAT now, for another issue.
Another issue?
Yep. The engine oil is leaking into the transmission fluid.
That doesn't sound good. That doesn't sound good.
No, it's all rear main seal.
But I thought we had a motor rebuild on it.
Yeah.
We had, no, we had the motor taken out so the oil pan could be fixed from the hole that had worn in it from the, um,
What was the?
Throttle cable rubbing against it.
Thirty thousand? We didn't get a hole?
Mark asked me, did we ever get?
Yeah, like a.
We never. Yeah, I should've brought that. I printed out what he did. It's not broken down per hour wise. Um, but it does list what was done. Uh, there's like five cylinders that he resealed that were leaking at the time. Um, you know, a few, quite a few small items that fix, you know, leaks and stuff. Like I said, the big issue at the time was the oil pan had that hole in it that the throttle cable rubbed in. Um, so yeah, so this is, it's a new issue. Just so anyways, CAT has it currently, um.
So is the rear main seal, is the oil pan and rear main seal together or is the real, rear main seal separate?
It's a separate issue.
No, no, no. But as far, I mean, some take, you know, some machines, when you put the oil pan on, it seals the bottom of the rear main. Others, the rear main is a whole.
I, that I'm not, I've done, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred percent sure. Um, but I know they.
I guess it doesn't matter, but I'm just thinking if he probably took that oil pan off to fix it.
Right.
And if he didn't change the rear main, if it was part of it and he didn't change the rear main seal, it would leak.
And the motor was pulled.
Maybe you should work on it.
For the work he did.
We could fix it, but it would take about ten years.
Bring it to work, let the kids work on it.
That's what I'm saying. It would take about ten years.
But anyway, so CAT has it up there. They're, didn't know. They're either pulling the motor, pulling the transmission, pulling both. Whatever they, it was easier at their shop to do it and should be done right when we get it back.
Yep.
Well, cause Mark asked me to ask the question, like, did, did we pay that bill, the thirty thousand dollars? Cause I think there was a motion
Yeah.
I know, we wanted all of it until we.
There was a motion to hold it. I went the next morning to have it held and was told it had already been mailed by two people in the office.
So we should have told that.
Well. I know, cause it is my understanding that, I mean, sometimes like when we get the orders, I know that some of the checks are already written, but they're not supposed to go out till we sign and sign.
So they are not now. They are currently not.
That's a huge no.
I am fully aware of that. Um, I battled it out several times. Cory gets it. Cory understands the checks that are on the warrants today are dated today and tomorrow. So they really, even if they were mailed, were not any good. They are not mailed. I don't even think they're signed. They're still in the vault waiting for select word approval before they're signed and mailed out. And that's what I.
Should be signed until we approve them actually.
And that's what I, and that's what I've asked for them to be done, but that's not the way it was done.
Maybe that's the way it should be done from here on in.
That's the way it's supposed to be done from here on out, but that's not the way it had been done under previous.
But either way, it sounds like it isn't, that isn't the issue, but it's, that's a whole nother issue, which sounds like Ann has straightened out. So hopefully.
My bookkeeper understands what I need to have done.
No.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's legal.
Back to the grater.
Yeah. So anyway.
Cat's fixing ours.
Whatever happened in the past, our grater is up to CAT. They're having repairs.
Yep.
Um, Goshen's getting rid of their grater. They were gonna put it, um, on municipal. You know, try that, but figured they'd check with us first. Apparently they heard we were having issues. Um, so he's, they're willing to sell it to us for ten thousand dollars. It's, we, we picked it up Monday, brought it back. They said we could, you know, run it, try it out. It's been tricky. It doesn't have brakes.
Did you drive it down Fertis today?
Uh, Peter did.
It sounds a little rough.
Yeah.
I heard something and I looked out my window. I was like, oh, is that our grater?
It needs, it needs.
What's it need?
It needs brakes. Um, that would help a lot.
Yeah.
Which, um, today I learned is about, well, twelve, like twelve hundred. It's, uh, um, but anyways, it, uh, it's nineteen eighty-six. I mean, it's not like it's a huge improvement. It gives us an option as a backup if something happens to ours. If you guys wanna, you know, go that route. I was, I made a phone call today to someone that's a little more familiar with dresser graders. And I mean, they're, it's still their, a good machine. This one was originally Polten's. Um, and I was told that it would be a good backup.
Okay.
So, not, but also for the price was a good price for it to, you know, a little bit of work. Um, so I don't, I mean, this is, that was approached, we tried it out.
Yeah.
Right, you guys, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm confident when we get our grater back from CAT. We should be back to normal and smooth.
Turn around and sell that one.
Smooth sailing and, but yeah, and that's.
What do we have in vehicle replacement or equipment fund?
We have plenty of money in the equipment for the highway.
That would save us from renting one.
Yeah, I mean, even if.
Costs us the ten grand.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, like I said, if we, you know, or like mentioned, we get it, we keep it for, not really. Um, I mean, I'm hoping, hoping it doesn't take them that long. But if we have it, keep it for a year or two, you know, no issues with ours.
Ours is going to work.
Yep.
We can't be without a grater, obviously.
No, no.
We're on a roll, we're on our roads.
People, people get a.
Oh, they get a.
Yeah, it's been, we're actually lucky in that aspect of the drought.
Dry, yeah, road town.
But, um, but yeah, it's, uh.
We'll make a motion if you want. After I do, spend the ten grand.
Can we add that and get brakes fixed?
Yeah, plus the brakes. And we don't want to put a specific number on that, but we want to cap it.
No, that's a base issue. Would you do it ten grand for the grater and no more than fifteen hundred for the brakes? Cause you said tw- I mean, that's about.
Yeah, that was from, um, Reggie at Windmill Equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can bring it up Middlebury.
That's one advantage. They're right, they're rolling, not, you know, wherever CAT is now.
Yeah, and, and as far as like all parts, everything, he's got everything. And I mean, he really spoke highly of the dresser grater. Nah, maybe not this one in particular, but, um, the brand and.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I think, you know, it would.
Yeah, I'll second one of those.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Hey, good luck getting the brakes.
You just gotta drop the blade. You still got brakes.
Yeah, you drop the blade.
On that fresh blade. Yeah.
But you have to.
I know, Fertis, we've got a fair amount. We've got some equipment out there.
Has a tip.
Little tip, oh, yeah.
Tip blade, it's a carbide tip. It has that set up.
Oh, oh, so it'll really stop.
Yeah. But the tricky part is be able to slow down. You gotta release, drop the throttle. But if you want your controls to work, throttle needs to be up. So it's, it's a learning curve to get around town, but.
Oh, my God. Okay. All right, um.
Brand new tires though.
Oh, perfect.
They're, they're.
Ten thousand.
Ten grand right there.
They're, how much is the grater tire?
I, yeah, I have no idea. I know a truck.
That's at least five grand.
Truck tire, recap, truck tires, three fifty's.
Oh, they're, they're truck tires?
No, I'm just saying in comparison.
Right, yeah.
But those, yeah, I don't, I don't know. But yeah, that's worth half the price of the grater probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, cool.
Good.
Thank you. Thank.
Most times, not anytime, but most times.
I know.
I mean, with an excavator again.
I have some really nice, nice sunsets.
Can I, I know it's not on the agenda and it's somewhat related. No, it's not an excavator.
Is it a lift truck? Man lift?
It isn't, but that might be sometime soon. It's, um, it's a truck body for our new truck. Um, again, I don't know if you want to wait for next meeting and whatever, but just to, just to throw it out there, I have, I have a quote to replace, um, our truck, which is eighteen. So really we've got two years to do it. If we accept this quote, we get in line, it'll schedule to be built June of twenty twenty-seven.
For the body?
The body, that's for the body company. The truck we can.
The truck you can, yeah, in a few months you can get a truck.
Well, yeah, I'm not gonna get a truck and have it sit for a year and a half till the body, but just, just to kind of.
I know, we're like all the vehicles.
Just to throw that out there that.
That's also going so big.
We'll have to decide on if we want that body or.
Get in line, yeah.
So we get in line. It's a hundred.
On the agenda for next meeting, yeah.
And a hundred and seven thousand was the price.
For the body?
Yep.
Okay.
So I just wanted to kind of.
Four orders.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No bucket truck this week.
Okay.
This week.
This week.
Or next.
All right, so let's finish up new business.
So it's older, it's older if he had.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions and orders?
I'll store it for you and, yeah, you're holding around your four bunnies.
Good, I guess.
Yeah. All right, get some of them around the sign.
I think they approved this one soon.
Yes, that's it.
So that's what they're signing. I'm gonna hold that one back so it doesn't get confusing.
It's gonna have some lop, not for ink.
Wow.
I know it.
I need a race for paper and ink.
Especially since someone remembered that painting.
Same one they had last meeting.
Probably where your glasses were.
No. Occasionally.
All right, let's recess from, uh, select word, open up his water and sewer commission. And we have bids for the spring hatch repairs.
So I need to recuse myself from this conversation for ethical reasons. I help, I'm going to have this statement and then I'm gonna leave the room.
Okay.
So Sean brought me a project. He said that he wanted Rick to be able to bid on it. I said, I can't have anything to do with it. I did help him prepare the bid documents and then I handed it off to him. So I am going to leave the room because I did not discuss it with Sean after.
Okay.
All right, so last year in twenty twenty-four, we had a sanitary survey. The only thing that, uh, surveyor could really find is our original water storage tanks. One was built in eighteen ninety, the other one nineteen hundred, that he doesn't like the hatches on top. They don't conform to the day's standards.
Okay.
So in that being said, I know it's a little bit of a shot. But in, in saying that in the past, anything to do with raw water, not treated water, we didn't have the permit for, we could just repair. The state has changed that. Um, so we had to wait for, A, the permit to come out that they were making at that point in time, cause we were that new into it.
Okay.
And go through and have it engineered. It got sent out, took a little while for it to be approved, but they've approved this. It's actually a fairly low cost fix to be able to keep using these tanks.
Okay.
Um, I have used Richard Redenson in the past for a spring box repair. We had some cement issues there. I've called them. And I had really good results, so I wanted them to be able to bid on it, even though I know Ann does have, you know, a little bit of a crossover there.
Yeah.
So I had her help me get set up, cause I've never sent out bid documents before. Sent it out to five different, uh, companies. I had two companies call me back and want to go and look at it. One did reach out and say that they were too busy. They weren't going to be interested, but thanked me for reaching out.
Yep.
The other ones, I didn't hear anything from. In the end, uh, Rick and I met up at the tanks. We took a look at them. He prepared a bid. Sent it in. The other person and I weren't able to hook up. He, he actually called me about an hour after the bid opening. Cause, uh, you know, he misread the document or whatever, so he wasn't able to get a bid in on it. Before I go any further and talk about Rick's bid and put any, are you guys happy with that process? Because if you're gonna have me rebid it, I'll put Rick's price out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um.
You sort of, you've got no other bid. Is that what you?
I have no other, I have one bid. I will tell you this, it is close enough where I almost could have approved it and I had to come to you. But I'll, I'll be at your mercy on this one. Whatever you guys would like, I will do. I would really like to get this project done before.
My next question, what's the timing, are critical for timing? Do we have enough time to maybe put it out one more week for another bid just to see?
We could, but like I said, I put it out for five, had two phone calls and one email response and other than that.
So wait, so you got, did anyone else go out and look? You did actually get two bids? Was this?
No, I, no, no. I had two phone calls on it. Uh, Charbonneau Design Company, Chuck and I had talked about it. We were actually working on a different project together.
Okay.
And he said he was interested. He called me. It was an hour or two after we'd opened bids and he said, he was, I'll paraphrase what he said, but basically he was good with that. He wanted to help us out, but you know, he was okay with things. But if you want me to look for more pricing, I will, but if not, I don't think we're gonna have too bad a pricing on this project.
Well, you.
Yes, the appearance of conflict is just concerning.
Well, it is the appearance of conflict, but there's also you're gonna look like an idiot if you call them up and say, hey, you know, can you give me a bid now? I mean, you, you, I mean, you missed the deadline.
Oh, hundred percent. And, and he was, he was good with that and understood that. And trust me, I make myself look like an idiot on a daily basis, so I'm okay with.
Well, I'm not saying you, but we, I mean, from my perspective, you know, the rules are the rules.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but I want you guys to make that decision.
He had a piece of paper with the date on it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that was on him, not us.
As did the, the others that, that never reached out, so I don't believe they were interested.
I mean, yeah, I get the whole conflict of interest, but if people don't bid, what are we supposed to do?
So, can I comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I would put it back out to bid. Change the specs slightly and put it back out to bid. I think you're, I think you're on, in a free slope with this conflict of interest, even though, uh, the interim town manager has divorced herself from the, from the process. It's still a real big conflict, perceived conflict of interest. And that's, that's really, I don't know if you guys want to bid. I wouldn't go down, personally, I wouldn't go down that slope.
It does make you uncomfortable.
Yeah, I, I would change the specs and rebid it.
Which I don't know about changing the specs, which you put out the bid, cause it was a state approved.
Okay, so figure, figure out a way. Call your state guide, figure out a way. And because, and it's nothing against, uh, the, the lone person. I think, uh, it's probably.
We know all the, it is the law because we all have laws.
Right, but it's a quality, it's, you know, it's quality, it does quality workmanship, but I think, well, even though the, uh, ethics commission's out of money, uh, they're still, uh, they're still, it's, it's still in force. And if you remember taking that course, they talk about perceived, perceived.
Definitely.
I think you have been.
Of course it is, but.
Yeah. I don't know. I, I, that's all I was.
I think she will prove that I rebid myself.
Yeah, I think we should just for, that would clear up any, any perception.
Same way.
Cause now it's, now it's like out there, everybody, you know, for anybody who hasn't heard, now they know is it, is out to bid and that other people have seen it.
You put it on peg, so.
It's on pegged.
It's, it's going to the public that you are taking this approach.
Yep.
To be fair to everybody across the board. And if you only get that one bid back.
Well, then so be it.
Right. Then we can go ahead.
That I would be comfortable with.
I wouldn't, I would disqualify that there. I think it's that serious. I would disqualify that.
Can I speak on that?
Go ahead.
To deal with stone masons.
Sure, your town quite.
To deal with stone masons, I have reached out in the past. Actually, the spring box repair took me, I called three or four different ones. And Richard Redenson was the only one that would, that ended up coming up and taking a look at it and getting it done for me. So I am okay with whatever the decision is, cause I don't want to put Ann into that tough spot.
Yep.
But on the same note, I hate to disqualify her husband because I do think he does good work, but there are other stone masons around that can do this type of work. Just hopefully we can get it done in a timely manner.
Yeah, I don't. I think I'm comfortable with just having. I think I'm comfortable with just having it go back out to bid one more time. I don't know if we necessarily have to disqualify him. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I'm not that strong on the disqualification, if we do it where we've gone back out of there.
I want the process to be very, again, it is on PIG TV, it's very open.
It's transparent.
It's transparent, it's out there.
Transparency piece.
Just so you know, Ann and I had talked about how to be as transparent as possible on this because of her husband being a bitter.
Absolutely, and I can see that you did do that from your end and her end. It's just that, again, the public perception, we need to make sure we get that piece too, so. You know, I think if we just put it out to bid one more time, we can cover our bases.
I will try to find some others contractors around.
What is it?
Just do a public.
What's the job?
Oh, it's, can you explain maybe briefly again, it's the, it's the.
New covers on our raw water tanks.
Where tanks up there. The Haskins, is that where they are?
Um, they're actually right up here on Plains Road behind my finished water tank.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
There.
Oh, so they're not the springs?
They're not the spring ones up.
Oh.
No, the spring boxes are their own items, the seven boxes that are up there, six springs, one distribution box. They all combine, Sand Spring run down to these older tanks that were the original private war tanks for the town until 1980 when this was built.
Tank, yeah.
And they just give us extra capacity, they're, you know, those two combined with our 800,000 gallon storage tank give us about a million gallons of storage. But the whole theory is, is any possible pathway for contamination, we are supposed to try to get rid of. And these tank hatches don't seal as well as what modern standards say. And I am all for, if it's not up to snuff, let's get it out of here and get it replaced, but that, that's the story.
Yeah. So are we, are we on the same page or?
Need a motion that we put this out back out the bid?
I would like to do that just one more time, just again for transparency sake.
That we reject.
That's why we didn't give the bid.
Yeah.
That's why we didn't give the bid amount.
Oh, you didn't do it, so.
Correct.
No. All right, so we're going to.
I made a motion that we rebid it.
Rebid the spring hatch repairs. Do we have a second?
That's why I want to predict.
I'll second. Any further questions, concerns? All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
I just don't think it's, I mean.
I know, I just want to.
I'm much more transparent than you can be, so, but it's fine, it passed, so that's, it's.
Yeah.
It's not about transparency. We don't have to agree.
It's not about transparency, we'll disagree, no, it'll be fine.
Right, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's fine, yeah, I, yeah.
But it's, we need to be transparent and, well, this, I think this would cover that, in my own opinion. One more time, if it goes back this way next time, well, I'd say we would award it.
I guess, do we, do we have to put a date in that, though? Because I know Sean would like to get this done before winter, so we need to, do we need to put a date in the motion?
I want to say we put it out, it was a two or three week period that it was out for. And then we got it back.
Just do the same thing.
So, yeah, so do the same thing, so we could look at it at the next meeting then even.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that and.
October 1st is your next meeting.
I'll see if Ann.
Have the bids in by October 1st.
I'll try to get it out in the paper, have Ann help me with that and as much as she can, obviously. And then I'll email the same folks and then maybe add a couple on to the list if I can find some email addresses.
Okay, thank you.
Good. I had somebody that does stonework. I can talk to him and see if he'd be interested. He might not have seen that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Done with water and sewer commission and come back into our open select board meeting where, if there is nothing else, I would like to take a motion. Anything else? Any came in late, anything?
No, but I figured it would be a great opportunity to have you, Madam Secretary, sign this for me.
Okay.
When things are done.
All right, thanks, yeah, we're just going to finish up this open part, so if I could please have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with 1 VSA 313A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place a municipality or person involved at a substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision in open meeting. 1 VSA 313A 3 to include the interim town manager.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, thanks.